Thank you.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Here.
Mrs. Hoover?
Here.
Mr. Rice?
Mrs. Belling?
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Gertner?
Here.
Mr. Braden?
Here.
We have five members present this evening, so just as a reminder, we are unable to suspend the rolls and have all three readings on any of the ordinances or resolutions. Moving on to amendments of the agenda, we have two. One is to add a communication from Norwood City Schools. That will be Communication Number One. The other is to add the moratorium ordinance back onto the agenda. That was motioned at the last council meeting. That will be Item Number M5, under introductory readings. Mrs. Hoover?
I move we amend the agenda as stated.
Mr. Braden?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Braden. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gertner?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to requests to address council. There was one that was submitted online, and that was for Melinda Smith regarding Lexington Avenue. Melinda Smith? All right. Moving on to the next request. The first is Brandon Atwood.
To the Honorable Mayor Schneider, Council President Gears, and esteemed council members, on behalf of the Norwood City School District and the Board of Education, we sincerely thank the Norwood City Council and all attendees of the joint meeting held on Wednesday, March 19th at 5:00 p.m. During this meeting, the school district provided an overview of public school funding emphasizing the significant reliance on local property taxes. We highlighted the disconnect between rising property values and the growth of school district revenue, particularly in light of House Bill 920. Additionally, we explored various tax incentive programs, noting the unique position of the CRA program within the housing statute of the Ohio Revised Code, in contrast to the TIF and EZ programs, which are governed by tax statutes. Our discussion focused on the definition of residential outlined by the Ohio Revised Code and the TIF and EZ codes, which is not addressed in the housing codes. This ambiguity has contributed to the current Norwood CRA ordinance permitting commercial developments to receive 100% residential abatements despite being classified as commercial properties on tax rolls. The dialogue was both engaging and productive, leading to the following requests directed to the council members present. One, regarding the current CRA agreements that have received their first reading, we respectfully request that council motion not to approve these agreements as presented. This action would return the agreements to the mayor's office for renegotiation with the developer, allowing the school district an opportunity for input. Two, we urge the immediate reversion of the current CRA ordinance back to the 2009 version and advocate for collaboration with the school district to develop a CRA framework that is acceptable for all stakeholders. In addition, all future ordinances are to include the original language along with the revised language in redlining format. Three, we propose the establishment of a two-by-two ad hoc committee comprising members from both city council and the Board of Education, meeting quarterly to discuss issues impacting both governmental entities. The council's decisions regarding the items on your agenda will significantly influence the subsequent actions taken by the Board of Education. We sincerely hope that you will contemplate our requests and recognize that these proposals represent the most constructive path forward. Once again, we appreciate all who participated in this constructive joint session and look forward to continuing this collaborative process with your support. What I just read was delivered to the mayor and all council members electronically last Friday. Now, speaking on behalf of myself, a Norwood resident, I want to highlight something that was brought up at the last council meeting and at the joint session last Wednesday. I think it is imperative to remind council that you are the check and balance to the city administration. It is entirely within your purview to fully question and understand what comes before you. You have the right to reach out to experts and even more importantly, those who could be impacted by your decisions or potential decisions. You are not a consent council. You are not a rubber stamp for the administration. And for the love of everything that is good in life, not everything needs to be declared an emergency. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next request to address council is Bishop Sonny James.
Wow, I'm so glad that I came here tonight. I want to thank Mr. Atwood for a wonderful presentation, and, you know, I'm sorry that I wasn't privy to all of the details, but I just want to publicly say I stand with you and I want to say to all of council, I stand with them. So whatever you're asking, let's just get it done. Point blank, slam dunk. You guys know me, you know how we roll. So I've been spending a lot of time at the State House. In fact, tomorrow and Thursday, my 13-year-old daughter will be in Columbus, walking the halls and learning how the political process happens. Last council, I proudly announced that our network of peers and advocates, we will not be filing a lawsuit against the city of Norwood for the death of the two African-American young ladies who died. We are going to be meeting prayerfully with the police chief and those with our police department because we respect our police. We should respect our police, and I'm going to always advocate that we do. At the same time, we've reviewed it. Last time I was here, I had one of my attorneys here with me, and we've had a number of people look at the public records. And, you know, it is a consensus that we need to take a look at some things. I brought to you months ago my very new initiative that's being called the Called into Action. It's beginning to generate a lot of momentum. Mr. Braden came to one of my recent community meetings where we had folks from the state. We had leaders in every capacity you can imagine, and I want to just tell you all, when we work together, it works. And I know you all have probably gotten sick and tired of being sick and tired of being sick and tired of hearing me yelling and fussing and all of that. Well, so have I. What I want to see us to continue to do is to work together, and we can do so. We can put politics aside and look at what's best for the community, and I hold myself accountable. I came in and this young girl was sitting in the front, and I made it a point to come over and say hello to her because everything that I do, everything that I represent, it's for you. And so I cannot stand before people just being a politician. With our new initiative called the Called into Action, you all remember that I brought a young man here to counsel, and he has to keep his face covered. If you go to Channel 9 WCPO, search for Solutions, you will see the work that we're doing in this community, in this city, and now we're taking it statewide. I'm going after million-dollar donors. I've already announced, as you know, that I've already landed my first attorney, Eric Bryan King. Last week, I was contacted by my second. And so I vowed, just so you all know, I am not going to accept one penny for myself, not one penny. Every dime that I'm going to raise, which will end up being tens of millions of dollars, it's going to be given 100% to organizations that are committed to helping our young people advance in their life. And I'm asking all of you to partner with me. I was very excited. I was with Judge Nadine Allen just the other day, and she still raved and said, "Bishop, you had us marching on the streets of Norwood, Ohio." Woo! I was like, Judge, that was a long time ago, but she was like, I couldn't believe it. And then she mentioned, she says, "How's the mayor doing?" And I said, "As far as I know, he's doing good." And you guys, you see, that kind of stuff means something to me. When people can stop talking about the old Norwood and when they can realize that we're a new community, new people, new passions, new love, that we stand together, and that's where I stake my life upon. So I'm standing here right now, and all of you are my peers. Plus, you know I'm not going away. So if you say no, you know I'm coming right back. But I just heard a wonderful suggestion today, and I want to challenge all those that are watching. My time is going up. I want you to get behind the good that happens in our community because there's a lot of it, and I'll be talking to you guys real soon. You all know, who don't know, that clock is for me because I talk too much, so they have to set a clock. Oh, he got it. There you go. Be well and be cured, guys.
Thank you. The final request to address council is Blair Murphy.
Hello, everybody. It's good to see you guys. This is not my thing to speak in front of you guys. My name's Blair Murphy. I live at 2045 Maple Avenue. I've been in the city of Norwood and lived here for the better part of 43 years. I've always thought something about Norwood that was like, it's convenient to everything, right? We have this plot of land that surrounds us, three square miles. The ball's in our court. I came to a meeting last week where PLK is now doing affordable living. They want to pass it along to us like it's senior living. This isn't a retirement community. This is affordable housing, okay? I know everyone takes it different. I see affordable housing on a daily basis, okay? I go into these places, and I know what they look like. I know what the housing market has done in Norwood, and that's because people want to be here. People are paying thousands and thousands of dollars above asking price to be here, okay? Mayor, unfortunately, they threw you under the bus, all right? PLK acted like they came out of their pocket for you, okay? It's unfortunate because we were all led to believe when they bought this that they had, that was the deal. They thought it was a great deal, and that's the way it was. Then they realized what it costs to tear it down, and once the process went on and on and on. But right now, we have plenty of affordable housing in Norwood. We do. You guys probably don't realize it, but if you walk the streets like I do with my pets, every day, if I'm not at work, I walk these streets, there is plenty of affordable housing in Norwood, okay? I don't know if it's frustration or if it's fear because I don't know when my time in Norwood is going to be up, but it might be soon. Because if they want to make the decision to build affordable housing on this corner right here, that's not the plan I've had in my mind all my life, where I thought Norwood was convenient to everything and people want to be here, okay? Not just people want to be here, but people are leaving downtown Cincinnati to come to Norwood. We have limited plots available and left to build on. We have hundreds of investors that are taking 100-year-old homes and turning them into masterpieces, and people want those. They really do. They are putting everything they own into making it theirs. We are the gem of the Highland. All we have left is Develop Montgomery Road. Ventura's done a great job at it. My frustration lies in a 30-year plan. You guys don't walk through Heritage Hill Apartments. Maybe there's not, those aren't affordable housing, but I bet they're affordable, okay? But just around us, right here on Elm, 2076, 2072, 2000 Elm, most of these above 20 units, 2000 Maple Avenue. So what you're going to do to me by us allowing, I understand the investors kind of have the ball in their court, but we don't have to make it that easy for them. I will then be surrounded by affordable housing. I know people who have spent $300-plus thousand recently on buying houses on our street. What does that look like? What does that number look like in 15 years? PLK couldn't give me an answer last week. Are they holding it for 30 years? No, they probably won't. They're investors. What happened to quality, you guys all know, right? If you were here long enough, quality was thriving, and then it got in a bad investor's hands. It went downhill, and then it got sold again. It got in another bad investor's hands, and it continued to go downhill to the point where it wasn't even repairable. They had to tear it down, okay? We're talking about 100-plus units right here at the end of my street. I have to drive by affordable housing to get to my house. I have to go down a one-way to come back up a one-way, okay? We have flooding issues at the end of this street, all kinds of problems that we could be fixing, but instead, we're looking toward affordable housing. I'm running out of time here, but I just wanted to let you guys know where my heart is and where my mind is. I'm not a bad person. If I come up here and speak against affordable housing, I'm not a bad person. There's plenty of it. Take your dogs for a walk around here. I live around here, okay? Montgomery Road doesn't look good right now, not just the street, but the buildings that were left. We tore down all the good ones. Let's do better. I'm not saying people don't need affordable housing, but there's nothing affordable right now across the country, and that's not our fault. With the last little bit of land we have left, let's think really smart about what we want to do with it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Moving on to second readings of ordinances and resolutions. The first is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a community reinvestment area agreement with Factory 52 LLC regarding 14,700 square feet of ground floor commercial space at 4580 Bicycle Boulevard and declaring an emergency. Mrs. Hoover?
I move we have the second reading.
Motion by Mrs. Hoover to have the second reading of the ordinance. Mrs. Franzen?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Franzen. Any discussion? Mrs. Hoover?
I was wondering if perhaps Mr. Skelly or Mr. Powers or even the mayor would like to make a comment about this before we begin our discussion.
Mayor Schneider?
Sure. I think all of these community reinvestment agreements that are on the agenda right now should be continued forward. They were negotiated by the city's professional bond counsel, the city's lawyers. Our law director's been involved in these negotiations. It's an ongoing process that the city has been going down a path for months, if not years, on some of these. So I don't know if people understand, but they actually do a Zoom meeting every Thursday to go over different investments and different TIFs and to try to work out all the particulars on these. So there's been a considerable amount of effort put in place by the administration to make sure that these are good projects for the city at this time. So that's what I would say on all four or all three of these that are on right now. I would want our city council to move forward with them.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Mrs. Franzen?
I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Atwood for coming in and sharing your thoughts about it. It is very valuable to me to get your perspective, and I'm glad that you were able to meet with some of the folks here. I was not able to attend due to Sunshine Law rules. Don't want to get in trouble with that, but I'm glad to hear it was a productive discussion, and I hope that by having the second reading, not passing anything, not denying anything, we'll continue to have that discussion, and I'll keep hearing from administration as well. I didn't know if Mr. Moore, since I think you were able to attend, if you wanted to comment on what, how you felt the meeting went.
Sure, Mr. Moore.
Sorry. Not to preempt.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just, were we going to have Mr. Skelly comment, or was that, was he declining?
No.
I just wasn't sure.
Mr. Skelly, that's your call.
Good to be councilwoman, first in the audience. Yeah, let me just provide a little background in terms of what you see in tonight's books in terms of applications and the background. So the two, I guess the main priority ones are the CRAs, Community Reinvestment Act agreements, and those relate essentially to the Phase 2 of the original 22 acres for the Factory 52. So these properties, about 5.6 acres, was contemplated way back when they started going through Phase 2. The structure for that 5.6 consists of, you work north to south, there's a, I believe, a nine or 10-story apartment building. There will be ground for retail on that, which is item, the first one you see. South of that, there'll be a hotel of around 100, 125, you know, units within that. That was contemplated originally and is going back as well. Now, of importance, in addition to the extensive work that was involved with Phase 2, clearing the buildings, cleaning up some of the land, parking is at a premium for that development. So immediately behind in part of the, is it called bicycle towers, there will be deck parking, which again, it's, I wouldn't say prohibitively expensive because there's a cost for everything, but my understanding typically to construct one stall is around $35,000, $40,000 per, to accommodate that. So those two CRA applications would address the commercial end of those buildings. The TIF ordinance is kind of a backend to that agreement. So you have the first 15 years provided for by the CRA, and then TIF would accommodate the remaining 15 years from 15 to 30. And essentially, our analogy to it, we want to call it sandwich, is the priority ordinance, and all that gives precedent first to the CRA and then to the TIF. So that gives you at least explanation of both the process, the applications, and a bit of the lay of the land as it relates to development, and these applications were approved both by the planning commission and by council as part of the PUD. So beyond that, happy to address any other questions you might have.
Were you able to run any numbers in terms of forecasting out?
I had some of my own preliminary ones. We had a, essentially, our financial person, Andrew Rissard, run them. I believe some of them were circulated. I don't know if you have them or not. We looked at that in terms of, as part of the request for the developer, when he was looking at what sort of investment they were necessary to make, and then what's kind of the reciprocal sort of tax payment that would be available. Again, that was part of the decision-making process that went into these.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Skelly? All right, thank you. Mr. Moore?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Gears. So with respect to the meeting, and I'll preface this, so I was appointed to council four weeks ago today, so, well, I share that from the perspective of, I have new perspective on this situation, coming into it and kind of catching a moving train, which is both the city and the school district. You know, I would say that kind of my overall takeaway is, you know, the state changed this, these ordinances to basically lower the threshold, or I guess raise the threshold, that the city can cede before having to loop the school district in. And I think in doing so, put communities like ours in the crosshairs of basically having to, like, let's say, lower our standards in order to compete for developments, essentially pitting community against community. Who's going to bend over more backwards to appease a developer who wants to do a particular project? And so having said that, if I am a developer and I were sitting in that room last week watching the city and the school district kind of go at it, I'm thinking, man, if I'm a developer, I divided them, now I'm going to conquer them. And it's really amazing to me because I think about, like, being a Norwood resident, and I just think about the community. And so to sit in that room and have, let's say, sort of accusations loud back and forth with really, really, really smart people, really, really, really smart people in the room, it was kind of jarring because to me, I just think, hey, I want Norwood to win. I don't understand why it's, well, I want the district to win, or I want the city to get my... To me, like, I've watched plenty of neighbors in the seven, eight years I've been here leave to say, oh, I'm going to go move to Mason or wherever because they have better schools, right? And so both the city and the district lose in that, in that respect. And so I think, you know, my takeaway from the meeting is just that that divide is real and baffling, and I would wish it away. That's part of the reason that I suggested the two-by-two standing meeting that Mr. Atwood alluded to, because it just blows my mind that the city and the district wouldn't be on better footing. And, you know, I do appreciate Mr. Mayor's comments with respect to having professional people, professional negotiators, professional forecasters, you know, so on and so forth. But I do wonder the extent to which the goggles that they have on when they're doing this work are Norwood goggles or if they're city goggles, and to what extent... I mean, what came through louder through to me is that the district feels like, however it shook out, the district very much feels like they were cut out prematurely from the proceedings. And so, you know, I would, I would want that meeting to happen and people, you know, let's say, like, go to war behind closed doors, but then like go out as a united Norwood front, you know, to the, to the community and to the developers, and to have a shared understanding of collective needs. So, you know, as a community, we have, and I'm just going to make this up, we have a $500,000 thing that needs to happen in the schools, and we have a $500,000 thing that needs to get purchased, you know, for the fire department. How do we collectively balance that trade-off and make the best decision for Norwood as a whole? That would be an ideal situation, and I, right now, my sense is that we're really far away from that. So overall, I thought it was a, you know, a positive first start to get everyone together, a very helpful meeting, but overall, very eye-opening to me just in terms of how, let's say, the city versus the district dynamic, because, you know, I'm sitting in that room thinking, well, whose side am I on here? Like, I'm on Norwood's side, but that seemed like a side that was difficult to be on in that space, which I don't think it should be that way. So I don't know if that's too real or too whatever, but that's how I felt about the meeting last week. And again, thanks to Mr. Atwood and everyone else who helped put that together.
Thank you. Mrs. Franzen?
Thank you, Mr. Moore. That was helpful. I didn't want to talk to you outside of this meeting since it has to deal with what we're voted on. I didn't want to do any discussion outside, so... But I've been curious to know what happened because I'm like sitting around waiting for Tuesday to happen. And I do appreciate, Mr. Mayor, your work on getting these developers here. This is really a renaissance in a lot of ways. That's hard to say. We're getting so much great development. I think that we can find some way to make sure that development happens while also keeping the school district's needs in focus as well. So I'm glad we're just doing the second reading today. No one has to vote yes or no, which would be unfortunate since two of our members are not here, and they could be the deciding votes, since I do not know how people will be voting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Gertner?
I think it's important to acknowledge that the school board has asked us to not pass this. That hasn't been said yet, and I think we should just discuss that. Yes, we've got great developments happening, but some of those are already invested here. PLK has already put their eggs in this basket, and I don't know that bending over backwards to give them everything they ask for is beneficial to my child who goes to Norwood City School. I hesitate to, well, I don't want to bring up the moratorium as much right now, but... I hesitate to, well, I don't want to bring up the moratorium as much right now, but I'm more interested in renegotiating the CRA to try to make up for how we, we lost that income for the schools in the previous ordinance from December 10th. Again, we were told that night that we were not changing the funding formula for the schools on December 10th, when we changed the ordinance. I don't think that was a misleading statement, I think it was an accident. I think that there were lawyers involved on the developer's side that helped write the ordinance that put it in their favor. That was set on December 10th, if you go back and you look at the meeting. So, anyways, I'm, I'm very interested in not passing the CRA, even though I think most CRAs are fine, but this one, previously, it takes away funding from the school. So, I'm concerned about passing this one.
Thank you. Mrs. Fransen?
Just a point of order. In order to pass or not pass, we would still have to have three readings, correct?
That is correct.
All right, thank you. Just wanted to make sure that was clear to everyone here.
Mrs. Hoover?
A question, and then maybe a comment or a question. Mr. Moore, there was a, Mr. Garten made a comment about the ordinance being written. Could you respond to that, please?
Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. President. The December 10th ordinance I wrote, I think during the meeting, there was, because I sent it out to all the interested parties, the draft, and I got comments back. One of the comments came from the developer's attorney, and it was not the actual functioning of the ordinance, it was just, this sentence could be worded in a clearer way to get to where it was supposed to go. I drafted the ordinance on the basis of a request for an ordinance to move multifamily, the apartment buildings out of the commercial side over into the residential side. I got a request for an ordinance from the Service Safety Director, and that's why I wrote the ordinance. And the comment I got from, quite honestly, which I do with a lot of, oh, here's a draft of an ordinance, if there are parties that I know are involved in the way it's going to be applied, I will send them a copy to make sure everybody understands, you know, am I getting this language right? Especially if they have expertise, expert attorneys on their side, is this going to work? And, you know, we do the same thing with things dealing with the Health Department or the Police Department, you know, we'll send a copy out, and hey, is this accomplishing? Is this going to cause problems that we don't know about? Is the language right, kind of thing? So, that was, the language, the comments I got back from PLK's attorney was, I don't think this sentence is quite clear enough, it could be read a couple of ways, so here's some suggested language to do that. So, that's where that comment from that meeting came from. But I actually, well, primarily drafted it, and it was based on a request from the Service Safety Director.
Thank you. Mrs. Hoover?
My second question, and I'm not sure who the best person in the room to answer, is your phrasing of taking money from the schools, and I think that was sort of what you said, that is one that I kind of, I suppose, take issue with, because for me, it's not taking anything, because there's, at this point, there's nothing there. So, I've done, I've had a lot of conversations with a lot of different people, and one of the best ways that I, my brain understands it is that if nothing happened with the site and it just sat, that's the income that it's going to be. But we were able to, the mayor was able to bring in a development that will provide immediate, small amount of income, increased income for the, for the school, and then in 15 years, the full amount. So, for me, it is a, that's the only carrot we have. That's the other thing, when I was having conversations with people in other communities, that they are, and I feel like we might have talked about this at another meeting, but other communities are quite literally gift-wrapping up, you know, here's, you know, three acres we're giving you, or here's a cash incentive that we can give you. Norwood, because of our financial history, doesn't have that right now. We have one tool to, to use for developers, besides our friendly smile, is the CRA. So, while I really understand the frustration, and I am, my husband is a 30-plus-year school, public school educator, I'm public school proud, everyone in my family, public school, my boys, public school, I, I think it's important that we not have the narrative be us them, as Mr. Councilman Moore pointed out, but what is the best strategy for the, for the city as a whole? And for me, bringing in the development does bring up the full tax base, and that does bring benefit to the school. So, for me, it's not as binary, but I do believe that, that the meeting on Wednesday was a very first meeting. I would like to have a plan that is more effective, that is maybe more targeted. I know one of our conversations with Mr. Woodside, he said that there, we might be able to use the CRAs a little more strategically, a little more targeted. I would love to get more information on that. I would love to see more numbers. I believe, Mr. Moore, you did some, I'm not a numbers person, but I believe he'd crunched some numbers, and I think that would be really helpful for us to look at, not the feelings part. I'm also a therapist, I can do feelings all day long. Here, I have to be with fact, and I can respect the feeling. And what's happening at the state level and the federal level is horrifying to me, and that is not what I believe is happening in the city of Norwood, but I do understand that everyone is on high alert, and that makes perfect sense. But we can go back to the Ohio State Supreme Court in 97, they found the system for funding schools inequitable and unconstitutional. So, that was in 97, and they've done nothing about that. That's above our pay grade. So, there are big, big, big problems with how schools are funded, 100%. I'm not down with it, but that is not within our purview to change that. So, those are just some of my, my thoughts. Oh, but I didn't finish. The one is, I would like to us, for us to figure out the best way to have the next conversation, whether that's us requesting administration to meet with our experts, because we do have, we've got the brains, have them, what are some opportunities, what are some other options, what are some numbers that we could then actually talk about and then have conversations with school board about? So, that's, I guess, a suggestion for discussion.
Thank you. Mr. Moore?
Yeah, just to comment on Ms. Hoover's point, I don't, I don't feel comfortable sharing sort of how I've crunched numbers until I can connect with Mr. Brossert, so, but I will say, to your point, of the, basically the no project, and then the five scenarios that I looked at, like, sort of the city comes out better in every case, district and, and city, by doing the project versus the, like, that is, I'm sorry. So, so, and I think what was, what was illuminating in, in doing this is to think about kind of the impact on the area. Like, you know, if there's a particular area of town that is, is getting a development like this, you know, what does that mean for the surrounding houses? Because if you look at kind of a quarter-mile radius around Factory 52, the, the school district gets more than $700,000 from the properties in that quarter-mile radius. And so, is the project being a boon to that radius? Is the project hurting that radius, you know, and the subsequent implications, I think, like, matter and sort of guide the thinking of, you know, what happens over there? It seems like Mr. Mayor might have a...
Just one brief comment. When you state the city, and when people say "the city," city is the community of Norwood. It's the school district, it's the city leaders, which is, you know, eight members of council, four other elected positions, it is the five-member school board. But we should change our terminology when we're talking this way, because when you say "the city," for some reason, there are members of this community that think, for some reason, there is a divide between what the city is doing and what the schools do. The schools are, the school district is put here for a specific reason, and they're to keep those, the schools going well. And there is a divide between where decisions are made. We have police and fire, and we have everything else in the community to take care of. But everybody has to realize that when you say "the city," we're talking about our community. Instead of saying "the city is doing better," you'd say "the community is doing better." These developments are better for our community. And a rising tide lifts all boats. That's, that's really what we're talking about. So, I ask council members not to differentiate when you say "the city," because it doesn't sound right to me, and certain community members don't, don't recognize it the way it's really meant.
Mr. Moore?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, and I think that is precisely my point, is, is that, like, I, I do believe, despite what I said, I do believe that sort of under any scenario, the collective Norwood comes out better with a project like this over the long haul. I do believe that. But I, but I, I, I do want to be very clear that I do believe there is a significant divide between, shall I say, administration, is that the appropriate term to use?
I, I don't, it depends on what you're talking about.
Well, I, like, I believe that the side of the table that was not the, the school board, whoever, whatever you want to call that other side of the table, there is a divide between those two entities, operationally, communicationally, all the things. That is my sincere belief, being in that room and having all the conversations I've had over the past month.
Is that a question to be made?
No, I'm, I'm just, you...
Mr. Snyder?
I would say that we, as an administration, have the community's best interest at mind at all times. And if there is a divide, it's because there's a certain entity, that feels like they should, they are having power taken from them, and it's, maybe it's true, the way the CRAs are and, and the way that certain things, the stat, the state statutes have changed, and the playing field for the administration and for, for us to work with has changed some. But that's not, that shouldn't present a divide, although it is, for certain people have an idea of how it's going. But no, I don't feel like the administration has, there's, there's a big, you know, crevasse in between what we're trying to do and what is good for the community, or what's good for the school board, and, I mean, we're, we're trying to improve, which improves our whole community. It's much like you'll see legislation later on, where we're talking about removing lead lines and trying to get those things out. That's for the greater good of the community. So, you know, when you talk about lead lines, do they affect adults as much as they affect children? No, they affect children much more so. And we, as a, as a city administration, are working for the greater good of the community in that aspect also. So, I don't, I don't think there's different, I don't think there's a divide, per se, as much as the playing field changed a little bit, we're, we're adapting, we are pivoting to take advantage of what we can and try to, try to move the city forward, and again, you know, a rising tide lifts all boats.
Thank you. Mr. Garten?
I think it's important to point out, if we're talking numbers and facts, that on Sherman Avenue, Lexington, and on Factory 52, we're getting lots of new apartment units. That will bring in students to our school district, but we've limited, because of December 10th, we've limited the amount of money that they're going to get. So, we're going to probably grow our school, but we've decided not to give our school any extra money in that process. And, and I do see it as taking away money. We have the money as a city to negotiate these things, we have the money to, to say that we can do the long-haul view and, and hope that this works out in the end. And I think the CRAs in general are a good tool for that, because the city is in the place. But I also think Norwood shouldn't be sitting here wringing our hands, begging people to come take advantage of us. And, and I think they did with December 10th. And so, my vote is no on, on the CRA today.
Thank you. Any further discussion? The motion on the floor by Mrs. Hoover, seconded by Mrs. Fransen, is to have the second reading of the ordinance. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fransen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Garten?
Yeah, a no.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes.
With a vote of four in favor, one against, the motion carries. Please have the second reading of the ordinance.
Ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a community reinvestment area agreement with Factory 52 LLC regarding 14,700 square feet of ground-floor commercial space at 4580 Bicycle Boulevard and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item, this is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a community reinvestment area agreement with Factory 52 LLC regarding construction of a 100 to 125-room hotel at 4580 Bicycle Boulevard and declaring an emergency. Mrs. Fransen?
I move, we have the second reading.
Motion by Mrs. Fransen to have the second reading of the ordinance, Mrs. Hoover?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hoover. Any discussion? Mr. Moore?
Just as a matter of clarification, the two, the two CRAs in question here both share an address and a parcel ID on the auditor site. One calls for ground-level retail, commercial space, ground-level commercial space, and the other is the hotel rooms. Is it, am I to understand that this is basically like a vertically-parcelled building? Is that, is that the way to think about this?
Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. President. The two agreements will each be separate buildings. One of them, the part that's the 14,000-square-feet commercial space, that will be parceled as the first floor of one of those two buildings, and the rest will be separately parceled as residential. So, it will fall under the, the residential version of the CRA ordinance and process. But these will be two different buildings. The thing is, and actually, the, the five CRAs, I think, that are on that, the Factory 52 site now, I think those were originally done all as one parcel number, but they've all been condo-ed off. But when they acquired it, it was kind of one parcel, or maybe two parcels, that whole spot, that whole site. And so, this is what's there now, and then as they get farther in, they will end up putting different parcel things on, that are sort of a condominium thing, but it's separate buildings instead of separate floors. I don't know if that makes any sense. It kind of does to me now.
So, is it actually that it'll be, that, that an entire building and the floor of the other one will be one parcel in the future, and then the upper level of the, will be a separate?
Mr. Moore?
Mr. Brayden, the hotel will be one parcel.
Okay.
The first floor of the other building will be a second parcel, and the floors above that building, above the first floor in that building, will be a third parcel.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor by Mrs. Fransen, seconded by Mrs. Hoover, is to have the second reading of the ordinance. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fransen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Garten?
No.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
By a vote of four in favor, one against, the motion carries. Please have the second reading of the ordinance.
Ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a community reinvestment area agreement with Factory 52 LLC regarding construction of a 100, 125-room hotel at 4580 Bicycle Boulevard and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a tax increment financing agreement with Factory 52 LLC, authorizing all other documents and instruments necessary to implement the terms of such agreement and authorizing and approving related matters. Mr. Brayden?
I'll take it, Mr. President. Motion, we have a second reading.
Motion by Mr. Brayden to have the second reading of the ordinance. Mrs. Fransen?
A second.
Seconded by Mrs. Fransen. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fransen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Garten?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have the second reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a tax increment financing agreement with Factory 52 LLC, authorizing all other documents and instruments necessary to implement the terms of such agreement and authorizing and approving related matters.
Thank you. Next item is an ordinance establishing priority of property tax exemptions granted for parcels of real property located within the city of Norwood, Ohio. Mrs. Fransen?
I move, we have the second reading.
Motion by Mrs. Fransen to have the second reading of the ordinance. Mr. Brayden?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Brayden. Any discussion?
Okay.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fransen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Garten?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have the second reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance establishing priority of property tax exemptions granted for parcels of real property located within the city of Norwood, Ohio.
Thank you. Moving on to introductory readings of ordinances, the first is an ordinance authorizing the safety service director, safety service director's loan application through the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency for approximately $400,000 to replace lead water service lines to privately held properties on Montgomery Road from Norwood Avenue to Fenwick Avenue and declaring an Mrs. Franzen.
I move we have the first reading.
Motion by Mrs. Franzen to have the first reading, Mrs. Hoover.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hoover. Any discussion? Mr. Moore.
Is Mr. Powers available? Would he be the appropriate person to question on this?
Mr. Powers?
Yeah, so just, just to try to put this in in plain language, it it sounds like we're basically borrowing these funds from the EPA, $400,000, in order to do the, let's say, private part, the resident part of the water line that lead out to the city connection point. And the the residents are able to pay this back at a 47%. So if it costs $1,000, they have to pay back $470, and the other 53% is forgiven.
That's correct.
And that that $470 is paid as, let's say, a surcharge on the water bill, for lack of a better term, on an ongoing basis over a 20-year period.
We have 20 years to repay the loan. Residents will typically repay it in five years.
Got it. And and can you, can you talk a little about just that? I didn't see sort of precisely the number of properties that were affected by this particular one versus sort of what the, so I couldn't, I couldn't really figure out, like, what was sort of the average cost per resident, if you will, average per participant, to get their side of the line fixed?
So typically, it's around $8,000.
Okay.
The reason you can't see that here is the the loan amount that's in these documents is the maximum loan amount. So we're making the assumption that every single one of these properties has a lead line. In reality, that doesn't turn out to be the case, but we're able to take that maximum loan amount. If there are properties that do not have lead lines, then we won't replace those, that'll reduce that loan amount down.
Got it. So it's up to that 400,000. And then the, I think the note I saw was that there was some urgency with this related to while Montgomery Road is being dug up and repaved, that that's an opportunistic time to do this work concurrently so you don't have to, you know, while everything's a mess, just go ahead and do it.
Yeah, that's a big part of it. We're also able, because we're redoing these roads or redoing these water lines at that time, to basically drill so that we don't have to go out and dig up everybody's yard to do these new lines. The other piece is if you're connecting a nice new line from the city side to an old lead line on the consumer side, you do run some risk that lead starts to leach at that point because you're disturbing the lead line. So it's definitely, it's a better move to go ahead and just make sure that it's not lead all the way back into the house. That's the best case.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Hoover.
Thank you. I'm curious, are these all residential or some of these businesses?
Some of these may be commercial.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions for Mr. Powers or any further discussion? All right, the motion on the floor by Mrs. Franzen and seconded by Mrs. Hoover is to have the first reading of the ordinance. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have the first reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance authorizing the safety service director's loan application through the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency for approximately $400,000 to replace lead water service lines to privately held properties on Montgomery Road from Norwood Avenue to Fenwick Avenue and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Next item is an ordinance authorizing the safety service director's loan application through the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency for approximately $400,000 to replace lead water service lines to privately held properties on Ralston Avenue, from Worth Avenue to Dale Road, and declaring an emergency. Mrs. Hoover.
I move we have the first reading.
Motion by Mrs. Hoover to have the first reading, Mr. Gerton.
I second that motion.
Seconded by Mr. Gerton. Any discussion? Mr. Moore.
Just as a procedural question, because is it fair to say that, like, like, I guess I would want to say that I, being in other meetings, you see three readings, all those sorts of things happen with a sense of urgency, like, I guess I just want to be clear that the reason we can't have all three readings tonight is because of the number of attendees and that this otherwise might be an urgent thing that we would have some urgency to pass, but we just can't procedurally tonight. So I don't want anyone to think that the all-three-readings thing is not, for lack of urgency.
That is correct. Since we only, to suspend the rules and have all three readings, we have to have at least six members voting in favor of that motion. Since we only have five here, we cannot proceed with that. Mrs. Franzen.
And I think in cases where there is a very urgent need and that there is a deadline, we are able to call special meetings to vote just on those ordinances, basically call to order, vote on the ordinances, adjure. So when there is a need for that, we do have a mechanism so that we can do it procedurally correctly over three days, three 24-hour periods, which may happen this week if there's something in here, which I think Mr. Powers mentioned with the, we'll talk about that at that time.
Thank you. Mrs. Hoover.
I'd also just like to share that there's a difference between suspend the rules, having all three readings, and the declaring an emergency. Would you like to give a quick reminder?
Mr. Moore.
About what that is, Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, the suspend, you're required by state law to have three readings of an ordinance or resolution over the course of three separate meetings. If a supermajority votes that, no, no, this is more urgent than that, you can have all three of the readings at one meeting. That's just a question of passing it. The emergency clause is about when it goes into effect. So normally, if you pass an ordinance and then it's signed by the mayor or it's vetoed and that's overridden, let's assume the mayor's going to sign them. If the mayor signs it, it doesn't actually take effect for 30 days unless there's an emergency clause. If there's an emergency clause, then it goes into effect immediately. There are some things that are different, like finance or appropriations ordinances go into effect right away, but for the most part, that's pretty much the way ordinances work.
Thank you. Any further discussion? So the motion on the floor by Mrs. Hoover, seconded by Mr. Gerton, is to have the first reading of the ordinance. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have the first reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance authorizing the safety service director's loan application through the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency for approximately $400,000 to replace lead water service lines to privately held properties on Ralston Avenue from Worth Avenue to Dale Road and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is an ordinance authorizing the mayor and safety service director to enter into a collective bargaining agreement with local union 3278 and Ohio Council 8 of the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFL-CIO, consistent with the terms of the attachment, the attached Exhibit A, for the period from March 1, 2025 through December 31, 2027, and declaring an emergency. Mr. Gerton.
Make a motion that we have the first reading.
Motion by Mr. Gerton to have the first reading of the ordinance. Mrs. Franzen.
I second.
Seconded by Mrs. Franzen. Any discussion? Mr. Garten.
Given that this is dated March 1st and we're not able to pass this on an emergency basis, is there any, I guess, what happens now? We'll call a special, call a special counsel.
Mr. Powers?
Well, it will delay our implementation, so it will delay pay for employees. So we will want to make sure that we we get this passed sooner rather than later because it will delay anything that's been bargained in this contract from being able to go into effect. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
May I add something?
Mrs. Fran, Mrs. Hoover.
I was going to ask if the mayor had something he'd like to add.
Mayor Schneider.
Thank you, Mr. President. Later on in my administrative reports, we're going to talk a little bit about the FRP, the Financial Recovery Plan, that you will have copies in front of you, and I'll be asking for some special meetings to pass the Financial Recovery Plan. And at that time, we could put these two ordinances on and potentially take care of those at those special meetings also, so.
Mrs. Franzen.
Thank you. I would definitely be in favor of that because I want to make sure the city employees get what is due to them and that the city is not unduly burdened by just happenstance that two people are not here in this, in this case.
Mr. Powers, did you have?
Not to go adding agenda items to a special meeting, but if we could also include the lead service lines on that, that would let us get those applications up to the state, and those are a little bit time-sensitive, so that would be helpful, too.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor by Mr. Gerton, seconded by Mrs. Franzen, is to have the first reading of the ordinance. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have the first reading of the ordinance.
Ordinance authorizing the mayor and safety service director to enter into a collective bargaining agreement with local union number 914 and Ohio Council 8 of the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFL-CIO, consistent with the terms of the attached Exhibit A for the period from March 1, 2025 through December 31, 2027, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is an ordinance authorizing the mayor and safety service director to enter into a collective bargaining agreement with local union number 914 and Ohio Council 8 of the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFL-CIO, consistent with the terms of the attached Exhibit A for the period from March 1, 2025 through December 31, 2027. Mr. Brayden.
I'll thank you, Mr. President. Motion, you have the first reading.
Motion by Mr. Brayden to have the first reading of the ordinance, Mr. Gerton.
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Mr. Gerton. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Mr. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have the first reading of the ordinance.
Ordinance authorizing the mayor and safety service director to enter into a collective bargaining agreement with local union number 3278 and Ohio Council 8 of the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFL-CIO, consistent with the terms of the attached Exhibit A for the period from March 1, 2025 through December 31, 2027, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is an ordinance imposing a temporary moratorium on the processing or approval of all applications for the Community Reinvestment Act tax abatements for residential new construction, three or more units, with costs of construction exceeding $125,000 and declaring an emergency. Mrs. Hoover.
A question, would this be appropriate to have it removed from the agenda? Or do we need to vote it first?
If you would like to make a motion to remove this from the agenda?
I would like to make a motion we remove this from the agenda.
Motion by Mrs. Hoover to remove this item from the agenda. Is there a second? Mrs. Franzen.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Franzen. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to administration reports. Mayor Schneider.
Thank you, Mr. President. In front of you, each of the council, each of the council members and each of you that has, we have a copy of the Financial Recovery Plan. The Financial Recovery Plan is put in place each year and to be passed by council, it's provided, it's put together, and this is provided by the mayor of the city. This is, this takes place while the city is in a fiscal emergency, which we continue to be in fiscal emergency. If you look at the the financial plan, there's a couple, there's sort of the executive summary at the beginning, then there's the financial reports, there's a general, there are assumptions, general assumptions, personnel assumptions and other expenditures. Those are good to read up on and understand, helps you, as you go through, it helps you understand a little bit more about it. Then it goes into the actual plan, which I think is eight pages of the financials. And and these are put together, it's, it's put together basically from 2022 all the way out to 2029 is the forecast. So you have some some historical information, and then you have the actuals for 2022, and then you go into the 2025 forecast. So you recall, the city operates under a budget at all times, and there was a budget passed in December that we went on to in January, but the fiscal emergent, but it's basically the fiscal emergency plan budget that is put in place each year. What what occurs with this is a lot, a lot of time and effort is put into it and, you know, ultimately, for all the city department heads, they're putting together numbers in November for this. And then the numbers get edited, corrected as we move forward. They, all these, all their budget numbers are put in here. If you look at the the left side of it, you can see all the different keys. So I'm just, just went to page 13, I'm looking at parks and playgrounds, and it talks about personnel services. These are all the staff members that are in there, and the, this is a bulk amount of money that's put in there. Contractual services, materials and supplies, and then capital projects, there's some capital projects funding in some of these, and then there's fixed expenses in some of these also. So you have some historical information to look back at where they are and where we are going. Again, I ask that you look at the assumptions and read the assumptions first before you start looking at the numbers so that you have a good understanding of what's going on. One of the things that that was brought up, you know, was materials and supplies seem to be going up. Well, materials and supplies are going up for a couple of reasons, I mean inflationary numbers, of course, but also because our departments are doing more now, they are fully activated, and they are working on the same, on, and really on the level as peer communities like ours do. So we're, we are filling more potholes now than we ever did before, and that's materials and supplies. We are doing, we're providing more services out of our recreation department than we ever have before. That's materials and supplies. So there's a lot of those, a lot of those questions as you look at those assumptions. The other part of this is going into the staffing plan, and if you look at Attachment B, it talks about the staffing plan. And and we go, we went ahead and kept all, for council, we kept all positions, all eight positions filled and funded. I know that's important to you guys, all of you, but but you can look at the staffing plan also, helps you understand what staff is working in which departments and how things are handled there. And then the back part of it talks about the capital improvement plan. And you can go through this and look at all the different, and and the capital improvement plans are, it's not just Noah and myself and one other person putting this together. putting this together. This is all the department heads, this is all, a lot of the staff is involved in this capital improvements plan and looking at projects and things that need to be done. I tell all the department heads throughout the year, they need to have a file that they are putting, when somebody comes to them and says, we need to do this in this part, and they get a quote, put it in a file, and then they bring it to the table here, and we can make a decision on, is that something we can afford to do? Is it something that's really needed? Is it something we can afford to do? And that's where it goes into the capital improvement plan. And if you look at the capital improvement plan, it goes from '25 out through '29. So we're trying to balance those things out. The budget is required. We've always tried to keep, you know, $1.8 to $2 million is a carryover number at the end of the year. Last year, we had considerably more of a carryover. I think next year, we'll end up with, I think it's the last number on page, maybe 13? Nope, it's lucky page number 15. And if you look at those final numbers down at the bottom, you'll see in 2024, that unencumbered fund balance deficit year-end is a positive number, pretty good positive number. And then in 2025, it's down a little because we are trying to get this place in better shape. We've got a lot of funding in place for projects that are going on, but after five years, we still end up with a pretty hefty carryover at the end of those five years. And that number, this keeps changing, and the nice part about this, and I, you know, for all the challenges that come with being in a fiscal emergency and having the auditor of state's office, you know, sort of looking over our shoulder at all times, but this is the best forecasting that we've ever done. This is the best work we've ever done on really looking, you know, down the road. And I always said that was a problem with the city of Norwood is we didn't look as far down the road as we should have been. It's hard to do when you're really barely making ends meet, which was a lot of years. But we're making ends meet, and we're looking down the road, and we've got a lot of really good projects in here. So take a look at these things. With this coming to you today, I wish I could have, I wish I could have had it to council and for the agenda. We could have got one of those first readings in there, but we couldn't. So this, I'm going to ask for special council meetings to be scheduled for Thursday evening, the 24th, Friday evening, the 25th, and Saturday, the 26th. That's sometime, whatever's convenient to council members, to try to get at least five together.
Mrs. Franzen.
Just a point of order. It's the 27th, 28th, 29th, I believe, is the dates for?
Today's the 22nd.
Today is the 25th.
Today's 25th.
25th. Why am I looking at this wrong here?
In March?
Yeah, I'm in March.
Might be in April. I just wanted to clarify so that we all had the right dates, because that's very important.
It is the 25th.
This, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday.
This, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, then.
So 28, 27, 28, 29.
Yes. Those are the dates.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at the calendar from 2022. I'm falling into the map.
The March.
Okay, I'll go to the right calendar here. Excuse me. Okay, so yes, the 27th, 28th, and 29th.
As far as a meeting time preference, understanding that Thursday is opening day, so it's kind of a holiday here anyway, will we be able to pool five, four members? We would need at least a minimum of four for each of the meetings.
What about opening day? Let's ask that question first. Can we get four for Thursday?
I'm out of town tomorrow morning.
You're okay? John?
If I have to.
You have to, don't make us send out the sergeant of arms.
Whatever.
You could do it late, do it at 8:00. I mean, the game starts at 4:00.
I can make it.
Yes.
So for Thursday, we do have, we're good. All right. What time do we want? Because we'll have to put the announcement out.
Regular, after working hours?
7:30 would be fine with me, since that's our normal time, easy to remember, and well after.
Game starts at 4:10, just saying.
If that's important to people. It's not important to me, so.
You set the time, after working hours.
I know.
I have to work after that.
7:30. Just regular time, 7:30.
All right. How about Friday, 28th? Mr. Braden, Friday, the 28th?
We only have three.
We can, are you in contact with Alexis at all?
I'm texting them right now.
So as just for information, Alexis has a sinus infection, so she may be able to be there depending on her other schedule stuff, so.
So I'll work for 7:30.
We can schedule it.
Do we want to do earlier on a Friday?
Yeah, let's do earlier on a Friday.
Friday, 6:00 P.M.?
Yeah, I know Alexis typically works and gets home around 5:00 or 5:30, so that'll give time for her.
All right.
If she is able to come, I don't want to speak for her. I know Sam or Ms. Bowling tends to work.
Saturday early.
And then Saturday, Mr. Moore, you're confirming we need five to pass with the emergency clause. All right, so we cannot go with the simple majority on Saturday. So we would need at least five on Saturday.
Saturday morning?
You want morning, you want noon?
10, 12 is five with me.
Morning would be preferable, but I can make anything work.
10:00 A.M.? All right.
10:00 A.M.
With those times?
7:30, 6:00, and 10:00.
Okay.
That is correct. And we will have formal announcements and postings sent out to everybody so that, yes, Mr. Moore.
Yeah, just about the Saturday one, it seems like Susan and I will be out of town, so unless we're definitely going to have these two, I don't know if we'll have four.
I can tell you.
Mrs. Hoover.
Mrs. Royce can come on Thursday, Mrs. Bowling cannot.
Which we were, I believe we already had the four for Thursday.
We're good on Thursday, Friday.
Okay, so Friday.
Yeah, if we're able to get six people on Friday, we can suspend the rules and have all three readings.
And just to clarify for people, this would be regarding the lead abatement money, the union contracts, and the FRP. It would not be talking about any of the CRA stuff. This is just to do stuff so that the city can spend the money that they need to spend and get the deadlines in.
Correct. Those items that we had second readings on?
Yes.
Those will all stay on until the next regularly scheduled meeting. Those are not part of the special meetings that are being called.
Okay.
Mrs. Hoover, an update on, so Friday.
I'm still waiting for a response. They're not understanding my shorthands, my apologies. I don't think they're understanding we need three meetings.
If we can have at least six people, so if they can both make Friday, since you are not able, you will not be here Friday, I'm sorry, Thursday.
Or Friday, I'm gone.
Yes, but if they, but if they can both make it on Thursday?
Mrs. Bowling cannot make Thursday because opening, she works.
Right, okay.
Not just fun, it's actually.
Yeah, so it sounds like we will be having all three of the special meetings. So the 27th will be at 7:30, the 28th will be at 6:00 P.M., the 29th will be at 10:00 A.M. And this is, the Financial Planning and Supervision Commission meeting is Monday, the 31st. Correct, okay. So that is kind of the, that is the urgency here for the, for a Saturday meeting. And that, I guess being stated, we do need at least five at the Saturday meeting at 10:00 A.M. in order to pass because of the emergency clause. Mrs. Franzen.
So since we are going to be doing the Thursday and Friday meetings regardless, we do have a little time to just try to see who we can wrestle up on Saturday and potentially change that time to accommodate six if we need to, since we need to do a 24-hour notice, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so since we've got the Thursday and Friday scheduled, we can probably, I can't believe that they're not sitting on their phones waiting to text us back, it's crazy. If we hear back from them tomorrow, we can figure out the time for Saturday perhaps, communicate it to you, and then you can get it sent out tomorrow?
Yes.
For that, okay. Just to let people know, that seems like a good timeline.
All right.
That was it for my administrative report. I don't have anything else.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mayor Schneider? All right, I did actually receive a text that the last ordinance regarding 914, 3278 was read, so we will have to have that read again with 914. Nope, not that one. That's right. All right. Yes, so we'll have to read that one, we'll have to read that caption again in its entirety. Yes, please.
Ordinance authorizing the mayor and safety service director to enter into a collective bargaining agreement with local union 914 and Ohio Council 8 of the American Federation of State County and Municipal Employees AFL-CIO, consistent with the terms of the attached Exhibit A for the period from March 1, 2025 through December 31, 2027, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. And shout out to Mrs. Lake for sending that text message. Mr. Miracle.
Thank you, Mr. President. A few updates from the auditor's office. Our 2024 financial statements are due by May the 30th, and Deputy Auditor Mayor Yeager is working on those. Quite a bit of work that goes into that. Also, we're working on some policies and procedures. Our record retention, which is required by the Ohio revise code, we have a meeting scheduled for Monday, March 31st. Also, purchasing procedures. Mrs. Yeager has also written a purchasing policy that we are reviewing, and once that looks the way that we would like, we'll move that to the auditor of state for approval, and then back to city council to approve that as well. Additionally, as you know, we're meeting every Wednesday with the treasurer's office and collaborative effort items that we'd like to focus on together so that, we've had some really good work coming out of that, so we'll continue to do that each week. Close my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Miracle? Thank you. Mr. Moore? Questions for Mr. Moore? All right. Then we move on to unfinished business. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. President. Two things, with regard to the proposed ad hoc joint meeting with the school board, is what needs to happen to, is there a formalization of that ad hoc group that needs to occur, either by changing the rules of council or an ordinance or some other mechanism?
Mr. Moore? Council need to draft any type of resolution, or they can just create that, facilitate those meetings as needed?
I think you could just facilitate those as needed. You could appoint two specific members to be a part of that, and do it by motion the way you adopt committee members. You could just do it by motion. Or it could be, depends on, you could have the council meeting before the meeting with the school board say, who's available on next Wednesday, because I can't be there? So, either way.
Thank you. And then just as a matter from two weeks ago, I think it would be great to have, on the request to address council forum, the opportunity for people to put, explicitly ask them for either their email or their phone number so we can follow up with them.
Any other unfinished business? Mrs. Hoover.
A couple things. This is sort of following up from our conversation earlier regarding the CRAs. What do we think as a council would be the best path forward in terms of, I'd like to ask administration, as I said, to provide some information, some data for us. Do you think that that would be best for them to present to council, to a committee? Is there a process that do you think, that folks would think would be most appropriate?
Mrs. Franzen.
I think something like that probably would be best presented to the full council, because if it's presented to the committee members, we would basically have to regurgitate it to the full council anyway, and possibly get things wrong in the retelling. So that's my opinion.
Does that sound agreeable to other folks to make that request?
Yeah.
Is that something that you could do as president of council to make that request?
I can't.
That would be lovely. I'm also, and I'm not sure if this is under unfinished or new, but the letter from Mr. Atwood and the school board, if we wanted to have a further discussion about their requests, if that's something we would like to discuss.
That is something that you can do, are you saying during this meeting? Because their letter is on the agenda, you can?
Oh, we haven't.
Correct, it's under communications.
All right.
So we can have discussion.
So that's why. All right, thank you. That makes sense. I have a couple other quick things. I attend a Norwood community organization, it's a bunch of nonprofits, and one of them is For C's for Children, which is here in Norwood, and they are doing their, I had a slideshow, but of course it didn't happen. They are having Norwood Ready Kids programming, starting in April in person, so that's a really great opportunity for folks to do parenting for 0 to 12-year-olds, so if you want to check that out. The other unfinished business is we have the Lydia's House donation bins out. It was, Mrs. Royce was out of the country, so I took it on myself to deliver the bins, and it was just lovely that at City Hall, that Sharon Stein helped me, and then at the rec, it was Natalie, and then at the Board of Health, it was Shereen. So just sort of lovely that it was three women helping this organization for, that helps provide housing for women and children in crisis. So if you have any cleaning supplies, personal hygiene, kitchen products, paper napkins, paper plates, that sort of thing, we would love to have them in one of our donation bins. We'll be doing that through the rest of March. I wanted to share that, and I believe the mayor mentioned that the Norwood Rec is doing a lot more programming. I believe someone in this room was at a father-daughter dance, and there is a mom prom coming up Friday, the 9th, and tickets are in sale. And I think, if you'd like to say anything about that?
I was gonna say something at some point, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Gerton?
Mr. President, thank you. Yeah, Clinton is the Director of Programming at the Rec Center, and it was a wonderful night, except that there were, you know, maybe 100 girls screaming Pink Pony Club, which as a father, that was a little bit hard for me, but otherwise, it was a wonderful evening. And, yeah, it's, I hope that you attend the mom prom if that's something that interests you.
Mrs. Hoover.
Also wanted to share that it is springtime. I can tell on my part of Norwood, we had some Norwood Xavier residents, student residents who were partying a little too hard this weekend, so just want to remind folks that we are a community to please keep your pants on and not urinate in yards. Yes, I'm saying this out loud. I did call the non-emergency number, and there was not a response, and the noise, I actually thought about putting it up for folks, it was really pretty impressive. I did call several times and then ended up calling Xavier, and they sent Officer Mo over. If anyone knows Officer Mo, he's fantastic. And he explained that Norwood Police were on a high priority situation, and so that's why they weren't responding. And he went over and he shut it all down. It was lovely. They cleaned up all their garbage, they cleaned everything up, it was quiet. So residents, if you are having this challenge, please do reach out to Xavier, to Norwood, to the non-emergency line, to 911. I think it's just unfortunate, we need to do sort of this reminder every season on what is appropriate in neighborhood behavior. And I will, I can share that on the city website, there are some Xavier off-campus resources, which includes a place where you can do a student conduct report. And I can share that I did a student conduct report and got an email back later that day. So they're wanting to be very responsive, so I'm hoping that that carries on. And the only other unfinished business is I wanted to share that the daffodils are starting to bloom at Mar-. that the daffodils are starting to bloom at Marsh Park. So take a moment and go down there, check that out. That's it, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any new business? Just to again formally announce the special council meetings, March 27th at 7:30, March 28th at 6:00 P.M., tentatively March 29th at 10:00 A.M. And the items on the agenda are the ordinances pertaining to the lead water service line replacement, as well as the two union contracts and the Financial Recovery Plan for the city of Norwood. So with those special meetings, we do not amend the agenda. Once that agenda is communicated, those are the items that are on there, unlike a regular council meeting. So it literally will be your first four items and which are Call to Order, Moment of Reflection, Pledge of Allegiance, Roll Call, then those items excusing absent members and adjournment. So just for clarity purposes regarding those special council meetings. Anything else under new business? We do have one communication. And that is from Norwood City School District. Mrs. Franzen.
I'll make a motion that we receive and file the letter as if read.
Motion by Mrs. Franzen to receive and file the letter as if read. Is there a second? Mrs. Hoover.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hoover. Any discussion? Mrs. Hoover.
I'd like to refresh what I just said about how do you guys think would be the best way to proceed with responding to those comments?
Mrs. Franzen.
Would it be possible to put the discussion of those comments into Committee of the Whole, since that will be occurring before the next council meeting?
We can, that will actually be taking place on April Fool's Day of all days.
I figured that would be timely. Since we can talk about it before we would have to do any other votes on these CRAs or any changes to the CRA ordinance.
All right. We will place that into Committee of the Whole. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor by Mrs. Franzen, seconded by Mrs. Hoover, is to receive and file the communication as if read. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Garten?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. We do have two absent members this evening. Mr. Garten.
Make a motion to excuse their absences.
Motion by Mr. Garten to excuse the absent members. Mr. Braden.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Braden.
Bless you.
Yeah.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Garten?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Mr. Braden.
Motion to adjourn, please. Thank you, Mr. President.
Motion by Mr. Braden to adjourn, is there a second? Mrs. Franzen.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Franzen. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Garten?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. This meeting is hereby adjourned.